County Cable, Montgomery.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our county council town hall meeting. We're here at Rocky Hill Middle School in Clarksburg, Maryland, where we have a room full of residents here who are ready to ask council members questions about their community. But before we open up the meeting to questions, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Craig Rice for some opening remarks.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for being here. It's so great to see a great turnout when it comes to folks that are concerned about some of the issues that are happening here in Clarksburg, and it's a great signal of community activism at its best. We really like to see people that are coming out. I would like to start and begin with a moment of silence for two people that we lost recently. First is for Barnesville's longtime mayor, Lib Tolbert, who passed away, and then also Wilson Wims, who is a longtime Clarksburg activist. And so I would ask us to just bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I did want to acknowledge some of the dignitaries that we have in the audience today, and I'm just gonna highlight the ones that I've seen. We have the delegate from District 15, Delegate David Frazier-Hidalgo. And we also have our esteemed Montgomery College President, Darian Pollard, who's also a Clarksburg resident. So ladies and gentlemen, what I wanted to do is I wanted to just say thank you. Thank you for coming out and being a voice about what matters to you. When I first got elected in 2010, I held my first meeting here in Clarksburg, and one of the things that this council understands is that we still have some work to do when it comes to making sure Clarksburg is whole. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that this town hall was here, so that we had an opportunity to hear from you about some of the things that we're currently working on, but also some of the things that we still need to do to truly complete Clarksburg and make sure we're delivering a community that is just like all of the other communities in Montgomery County, one of the best places to live, not only in this state, but in this great United States of America. And so with that, I want to introduce my colleagues that are here with you tonight. I'll start with our council vice president, Councilmember George Leventhal. Councilmember Mark Elrich. Councilmember Nancy Florine, I'm sorry.
The other one.
There's a reason why. We also have Councilmember Phil Andrews. Our newest council member from District 5, Councilmember Cherie Branson. Councilmember Roger Berliner. And Councilmember Hans Reamer. And so Susan, with that, I'll turn it over to you for our first question.
Thanks, Craig. We've got one ready to go.
Hello, my name is Harry St. Hors. I own the Boyd's Hotel, the historic property that's on the Montgomery County Atlas, and over the last 30 years, we've seen quite a few changes up here, some of them for the better, in the greater Boyd's, Clarksburg, Germantown area, and some not quite so much. We've seen our rustic roads program wiped away without so much as a citizen hearing. We've seen the Great Indian Trail, Clarksburg Road, broken at the spine downtown Clarksburg, runs into a dead end. And we've also seen some threats to our aquifer. So we want to know, how can you assure us that wedges in corridors doesn't mean wedge as much as you can into the corridors?
Thank you very much for that question. Councilmember Florine?
I'll answer that. I chaired the council's Planning Housing and Economic Development Committee, and years ago, as a young child, I served as a member of the county planning board. So we've worked with the wedges and corridors plan since the late '60s. What's happening in Montgomery County, certainly what's occurring up here, is the outgrowth of that plan. Everything that we've done is consistent with it. Certainly, the most recent work we've been doing in Timmaw Creek reflects the council's attention to preservation of the environment and the debates that are natural about community building and whether we've made promises here or there to communities. But what you see in Montgomery County is very consistent with what was planned 50 years ago. The devil's in the details, that's for sure, and we do specialize in that.
All right.
Hi, my name is Jean Holzheeman. I'm from Clarksburg. I live near Fountain View. My question is Fountain View was developed in 1972 with a dry sewer, and at this point, there are neighbors whose systems are failing. Apparently, it is a priority to get the sewer, but when the development came all around us, no sewer went to them. And I know there now is some issue that their sewers are six inches, the new standards are eight inches, so now there's rumors going around that they're not gonna be able to use the sewers that are in the ground, they're gonna have to be dug up. And so I'm just wondering what's happening for Fountain View to bring the sewer to that neighborhood?
Well, I'll go ahead and start, because our sewer issue for Clarksburg as a whole has been one that's been prevalent since I first came onto the council in 2010 as one of my priorities. And we've experimented with a number of different ways in which we could try to address sewer to the historic district, as well as to areas like Fountain View. It's extremely important for us to make sure that from a health perspective, and not only just a convenience perspective, which I think that a lot of folks say, "Well, look, I live on well and septic, and it's okay," but we're really talking about a health perspective that we need to come up with a solution. You will know that the council actually explored using the fire station as a means in which to get a pumping station that would then be able to direct sewer service to the Clarksburg Historic Area and areas like Fountain View. That unfortunately didn't pan out. We are currently working with WSSC right now and trying to come up with another solution, but we remain committed, and I can tell you, it is one of the number-one priorities of myself as your district council member, but also of this entire council, to make sure that we are addressing that, because it truly is something that we need to correct. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, here.
Good evening. My name is Rob Shapiro. I wanted to thank each and every individual council member for coming to Clarksburg. Welcome. Just don't forget to set your clock back when you go down county. And again, ladies and gentlemen, here, it's impressive, and I personally value all of the opinions, and I appreciate everyone's concern for our united Clarksburg community. I drink water, and my little children drink water. I'm the vice president of the Clarksburg Chamber of Commerce. I invite all of you to please come to our meetings the first Wednesday of each month at the Bennigan's. I do have a question. And we need input from the community of Clarksburg to make Clarksburg a productive, successful community, okay? Now, that being said, I'm involved in my community, part of my HOA. I do some work up at the school every now and then, and I've been living here for 10 years under the general impression that I moved here along with tens of thousands of other people that moved to Clarksburg under the promise that we would be having a town center and a master plan that was passed in 1994, of which we essentially have nothing. Clarksburg as a town and as an area has gotten a very bad reputation, and there's not a push-pull between -- it's not that we want Clarksburg to be paved over with bricks and mortar. That is not the case. Clarksburg and the Clarksburg community requires and deserves the riches and the services that the entire Montgomery County citizenship has in spades. Clarksburg needs its recreation, its infrastructure, its roads, its library, its professional services, its retail, and its shops, within reason. At the moment, Clarksburg is, if you know who lives here, there's a lot of you that do, there's a lot of people here that don't live in Clarksburg. Nevertheless, it's to some degree unfair for outsiders to come to Clarksburg and tell us what we need to do, because they know better than us what's good for Clarksburg, but they're gonna go back down county and live somewhere else where they have what they need. My question, thank you. My question in closing, and again, thank you for your time and consideration. My question is, after 10 years of waiting and debate, when is Clarksburg honestly going to get what it was promised from the amended 1994 master plan with its infrastructure, its services, its professional-related amenities, its parks, its library, those things which we richly need, and for the survival of Clarksburg, it's imperative that we begin to receive some support from the council to have that happen and keep the lines of communication open, so we do it in a productive way to include the Clarksburg community? Thank you.
Well, I'll speak to that to a certain degree. I'm sure other people want to weigh in. I'm not even sure Craig knows this, in our Transportation and Environment Committee the other day, we approved adding extension of Observation Drive up to Clarksburg. That's gonna happen. I have gotten the Ovid-Hazen Wells recreational plan updated information. They're working on the carousel, moving the carousel to Ovid-Hazen Wells, finally, yes! And also looking at locating the aquatic center there. There are other issues certainly with Clarksburg. Certainly, the fire station is a hot topic as we speak, the issue of the funding of the library. You also need to remember, was it four years ago? We eliminated the special taxing district elements in Clarksburg. That did put Clarksburg in line with other parts of the county in terms of receiving CIP money. But I will say, we are moving forward on these other points, and I think you're gonna see some improvements. There remain other debates and other forums, and those are never gonna go away, because that's Montgomery County. But the fact of the matter is, we're starting to see some improvement in that. We cannot force the Clarksburg private investment in the shopping center on our own. That's a whole nother kettle of fish, and I believe the library is intended to be within that shopping center plot of land. But as you know, that has a long history, driven by Clarksburg concerns as well.
Councilmember Reamer?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's great to see this turnout tonight. You know, I arrived to the council three years ago, and one of the things that I have learned is that there are very constrained resources and that government can never do everything that, you know, the residents would want it to do. And trying to figure out how to rationalize the choices that we have is very tough. I think we've made some real strides. One of the first steps that Councilmember Rice initiated was to change the master plan so that we got a grocery store over on Aurora Hills, right? And that was something where we got the planning board to turn on a dime and move really quickly to provide a basic amenity that this community is lacking. I have spoken with many of the stakeholders regarding the town center development. I think that is moving forward. I'm optimistic about it, but I'd like to hear what everyone thinks. Nancy Florine mentioned something, I think is very significant, which was at the Transportation Committee this week. Nancy recommended, and I supported, and Roger supported, adding to the capital budget a significant extension of Observation Drive. The executive had recommended just building four lanes from up to the access point where you would go Old Baltimore Road to the new mall that is coming to Cabin Branch, and we recommended that we take it all the way to Clarksburg. That is a $165 million project, so we're talking about a lot of money in the capital budget. Of course, we've got money in there. We're hoping to fund with the high school and middle school. So there's a lot, and at the same time, it's never enough, and I wish I had a better answer. Thank you.
This is actually a big question, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Leventhal.
Well, I do want to point out that if -- first of all, I appreciate your statement and your question, and I do think it's valuable for everyone here in the room to understand the points of view of everyone else here in the room. And it is the case that four of us are at large, and we represent everyone in Montgomery County, so we have to consider the wants and needs and views of those who live in Clarksburg, who don't speak with one voice and are not unanimous. We've heard multiple points of view on this latest phase of the Clarksburg master plan, with those who don't live in Clarksburg, and you're correct, we've heard from a lot of folks who don't live in Clarksburg, who have nonetheless expressed strong and legitimate views about the watershed and how it feeds the reservoir and how the reservoir is a backup water supply. So all of these things are legitimate, but it's also true that if you live in Clarksburg and you say, "Well, why don't we have the shopping and amenities that they have in Germantown, or Bethesda, or Rockville, or anywhere else in the county that has population centers that still today have a whole lot more people in them?" And that's fundamentally the answer. I mean, Clarksburg today doesn't even have 1/3 of the population of Germantown today. So that's fundamentally the answer. There still aren't as many people living here as there will be in the future, and therefore the amenities that are available to serve people. It's great news that there's a supermarket in Clarksburg Village that's been a long time coming, and the market dictated, after a certain point, that there were enough people to buy groceries there, that it was a wise investment to put a grocery store there. And as the population grows, there will be more services to meet the population, but if there isn't the population base to support the merchants, the merchants can't survive.
So before I turn to Councilmember Andrews and Councilmember Elrich as well, I just want to jump in and say one thing. Clarksburg for me, when I first inherited it as the district council member, was a mess. I admit it. It was a mess. There was all kinds of things going on. The very first action I took, which Councilmember Florine mentioned, as the council member representing District 2, was to make sure that the county executive got rid of the special taxing district for Clarksburg, because I did not believe that Clarksburg residents should have to pay for the very amenities that we provide for all of our other county residents. That was the first thing that I did. And I'm not telling you this for applause, I'm just telling you because it's important for you to understand Clarksburg has always been a priority. But I must tell you, it is also, in fairness to my colleagues, been a priority, because I can't do this alone. I rely on at least four other people to be with me to make sure that these kinds of things happen for Clarksburg, and it was unanimous when we understood that nothing was happening with Clarksburg Town Center when Newland was in control, and therefore we had to find a way to try and bring a grocery store to Clarksburg. And we did that in Aurora Hills, and I know it's not in Clarksburg Town Center. I know for folks who don't live in Aurora Hills, it's like, okay, that's not a benefit. I understand, but we're trying to be responsive to the needs. Now we have an opportunity where we have to do what we can, I feel, to support Clarksburg Town Center and make sure that it is successful. And by doing that, it is my personal belief that surrounding properties that feed into Clarksburg Town Center need to help support that. That's my own personal view, and I know that there are a lot of people who don't agree with me, and that's okay. But I want people to understand that this is about Clarksburg. It's always been about Clarksburg. It's not about developers. It's not about special interests. It's about the people of Clarksburg who, at the very beginning, told me what they wanted. And I have always tried to deliver to Clarksburg just that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Well, the good news is that there clearly are a lot of people that care about Clarksburg, and you're here, and Clarksburg is a community that is gonna continue to grow. There is no question that one can have the amenities in Clarksburg that have been promised and also protect the environment, which is important to not just people outside Clarksburg, it's important to people in Clarksburg as well. So it's important that there be huge involvement, wide involvement, on this issue, and there is, and that's good, because change in democracy is more of a marathon than a sprint, and it takes the type of perseverance that has been displayed, sometimes longer than one would like, to make change often and to see results. And it's a good sign that the people who are here are determined and doing your part to bring that change about. So that is a great sign. The council is working to balance what the needs are in the whole county, and one of those needs is to make sure that Clarksburg has the town center that it needs to be a thriving community, but also to make sure that we continue to have strong environmental protection in our county and make sure that we don't go backwards and that we are a good environmental steward. So that's what we're trying to do, and we appreciate all of your communications so that we get that balance right.
Councilmember Elrich?
So I got elected to the council here in 2006, and it was one of my priorities from the beginning to get the special taxing districts off of the backs of Clarksburg, and not just because it's something that's not typically done, but because of the way it was done. The first time I saw a paper with "You will pay blank amount of money, starting in blank year, for a blank number of years," I highly questioned whether people were really fully informed as to what they were getting into. On the other hand, the whole feasibility of the infrastructure up here was predicated on that district, and taking that district apart has created a capital shortfall. And I'd be the first person to say that I believe the county mismanaged the development districts. We made changes to the development district law subsequent to that, because I think we all felt we needed to do things differently. But I think mistakes were made, and that Clarksburg has unfortunately paid a price for some of those mistakes. But I'm encouraged by the changes, the fact that we were able to turn the planning board around and get a very quick decision on a grocery store. I strongly, you know, supported and worked with Craig to get the CCT up here sooner rather than later. This whole project, as we all know, is predicated on the CCT coming here. You all are here. That thing's still on the drawing board, and not much on the drawing board beyond the southern part of this corridor. So we really need to provide the transportation that we promised people we would provide, and you know, Craig and I have also looked at a second line that would help serve 355. So I think we're looking at trying to do things here. But I think folks also have to be realistic about what we all know the elephant in the room is, which is discussion about what happens next. And I don't believe for a second that if Park and Planning had seen the economic study that they commissioned, yet for reasons that escaped me, decided to go ahead with their planning before they actually got the study back, would have put into the plan what they put into the plan, because the economic study doesn't support what was in the recommendations of Park and Planning this time. And we had their consultant in front of the council, and he was very dubious of the recommendations that were in that plan. And I regret the fact that the planning board chose to, I think, do things without adequate information. I think it's a serious mistake to have not done the market study first. But even if we did what was in the plan, it won't get you what wasn't given you. That plan won't create a library. That plan won't widen the roads that weren't widened. That plan won't get Flanagan to do the town center any faster than he's planning on doing, but I'm actually encouraged, I think it's the middle of this month, Craig, that he's actually gonna go out to the community and present that he's ready to go forward with town center. And that's probably the best news you all have had. So I think there are good things happening, and I think we're gonna have to deal with the sewer issue, we're gonna have to deal with the library issue. We can't leave this community without, because of mistakes that were made by previous councils, but we've gotta figure out a way to do it, because I think, as all of us know, there's not an unlimited supply of money out there, and we're gonna have to figure out how to fit this in. But I think all of us really care about Clarksburg, and what happens up here is really important, and the fact that you should have the kind of lives and amenities that everybody else has, I think is critically important, and I think all of us are committed to that.
Dear council members, my name is Elizabeth Kessler, and I'm a Clarksburg resident. I want to make you aware of a very serious problem my husband and I are having with Beazer Homes, our builder. We moved into our home almost two years ago. We have many home defects, approximately $30,000 worth, that were reported to the builder. Some of them are structural warranty during the one-year period of our warranty. We have a retaining wall that's falling down. We've never been able to use our master bathroom shower. Our heat is broken. $15,000 wither wood floors are cracked. We cannot get them to come fix our problems. We have no way to force them to uphold our warranty. The county has two laws that you have enacted, which are Title 10 and 31(c). Both were enacted to protect homeowners, but Montgomery County has no way to compel Beazer to fix my problems, my warranty problems, or other people. It's puzzling that a Montgomery County resident can buy a $15,000 new car and be protected under a lemon law that allows them to return the car for major unrepaired defects within a warranty period, but when you buy a $400,000, $500,000, $600,000, $700,000 house in Clarksburg, that there's no way to force the builder to repair them. Now, I have been in contact with Montgomery County Department of Consumer Affairs. The problem with Consumer Affairs is the most that they can do is levy a $500 fine against the builder for each incident. That's a slap on the wrist. That is in absolutely no way forcing them to fix the problem. And what I describe is, these builders in Clarksburg are enacting what's called closed contracts. They are the builder, the seller, sometimes even the finance company. If you have a problem with the warranty, you have to pay $450 filing fee for arbitration. You have to pay $10,000 to $30,000 for your own attorney to come to arbitration. They choose the arbitrator, and you have signed away your right to sue them in a court of law. I'm asking that a real law, the Elizabeth Kessler law, be enacted, which includes the following: if a consumer files a complaint in the Office of County Consumer Protection, the builder must attend, and the county will arbitrate it. That arbitration is binding to the builder. If a builder has current complaints open, no further building permits will be issued to the builder until those complaints are closed by settlement with the homeowner or county arbitration, which will be binding. Now, you have binding arbitration for the Montgomery County Commission on Common Ownership Communities, where condominium owners who have complaints can file a complaint with the county. The county forces the homeowners association to come, and that is binding. It is law, just like you went to court. But you have no ability to do this for homeowners that do not uphold their one-year warranty. Mr. Rice, you told me your first home was a Beazer home. You were very unhappy with it. You would never buy another Beazer home. You just told me that. I have witnesses, and I want to get that on the record. You can quote me in that from The Post and The Gazette. I'm filing my complaint with the Office of Consumer Protection this week, Mr. Rice, and I really, I am sincerely hoping that you'll protect me and other Beazer homeowners and follow my complaint through the Department of Consumer Protection and use everything within your power to have them resolve our building issues, our structural issues, and those of all the other homeowners in Clarksburg. Beazer cannot continue to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your question. Since you've already put it out there about my experience with Beazer, Bill Turk, you know, it really is one of those where, look, when I bought my first home in Germantown, Villages at Town Center, it was in fact a Beazer home, and we actually had some challenges. And it was our HOA who actually ended up working with Beazer to come up with a remedy and a resolution. And so I would love to work with you, have my office work with you on a number of those initiatives, some of the things that we were able to do to leverage, but also I'd certainly be amenable to some sort of legislation that we might be able to look at to help protect prospective homeowners, to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. I think that it's a great opportunity for us in learning from an experience like this to make sure that nothing like this happens. I know Councilmember Elrich has a comment as well.
One of the first things I got involved in in Clarksburg was one of the condo communities where the windows were installed backwards and the stone facing was coming away from the building, and we got involved, and you know, they were lucky, because the developer hadn't signed it over to the association. And we were able to delay the sign over to the association until that problem was fixed. So this is not the first time. I've heard this issue about construction up here. I'd be happy to work with Craig and definitely make sure we follow up with Consumer Protection. But we clearly need laws that treat houses at least as well as we treat cars, and I'd be happy to work with you and Craig on this.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming up here tonight. We appreciate your attending this and helping us out. I had a prepared statement in question, but it's already been brought up. I'm going to go ahead and say it anyway, because you know why I'm here. My name's Patrick Darby. I am a property owner in the historic district, and for over 15 years, my father and I worked to bring sewer to the historic district because the area does not perk, and a lot of the properties are too small to qualify for septic. Councilmember Florine was one who worked with us throughout that time, and a few years ago, the council acknowledged that the district was a health hazard. If we want to revitalize the historic district, our only option is sewer, but the cost has become impossible for the residents, and the county has admitted it is prohibitively expensive for their own budget. So I left us dependent upon developer like Peterson to do the job for us. And if these proposals or something happens, you know, Cabin Branch wins out, Peterson abandons the project, what comes next? What do we do after that? And is the historic district going to be forgotten again? Now, I want to add a couple of other things to it because it sort of feels like we're in the 1950s there. We have propane tanks. We don't have natural gas. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have street lamps, and it's a pretty dangerous thing for people to walk at night on 355. We don't even have fires. So we kind of like to see things upgraded a little bit and help us out to make it a better community for everybody, so we're living in the 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Florine?
That continues to be a problem in the historic district. It's also, the issue of failed septics is a big issue in a variety of communities through the county, a lot of it up here, but also in other parts of the county, too. And we still, despite my harassing the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission and our staff, they still haven't come up with a way to figure out how to pay for it. So my colleagues in the TNE Committee will tell you that I routinely harass them about that, and we are trying to find a solution. But for Clarksburg, we think we're on to something that we'll be working with, I'll be working with my colleagues on in the coming months and maybe a year, I don't know, but we think we may have a way to address that independently. We'll see. We'll see, but be optimistic.
Councilmember Levinoff?
Patrick, I just want you to know that the issue of the failed septics in the historic district has come up a lot, and councilmembers really want to address it. So we're aware of it. We've been talking about it. It's very much under discussion with respect to how we finish out the historic district. And so we've heard you, and we're working towards a solution with you.
My name is Mike Grabitz. I've lived in this county since 1975, and I guess I'm one of those awful down-county people. But one of the things I've observed in the last 30 years in this county, 30, 35 years in this county, is the influence of more and more money in elections and big contributors, whether they be developers or builders or people who have interests of various sorts in the county. And I'm wondering, I'd love for the council to address this issue. And I know that Councilmember Andrews just introduced some legislation to sort of help with some aspects of public financing. I'd like to find out more about it. I'd like to find out whether it might help us, you know, take some of the big money out of politics, which is corrupting this country, and I hope not this council. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrew?
Well, the council has a bill before it that I introduced a couple of weeks ago that's cosponsored by all of my colleagues that would establish the option of a partial public financing system for county council and county executive elections, beginning with the next election, which is as soon as we can do it under the state law. The council has worked for 12 years to get this authority from the state. We couldn't do it until now. We've tried to get it. Now we can. There are other places around the country that have public financing in place, and the purpose is to really make democracy work. It's to reduce the excessive influence of big money in politics. It's to involve more people in campaigns by giving candidates an incentive to go out and find small individual contributors, by giving public match for small individual contributions. And it should also encourage more people to run for office who don't have access to traditional sources of campaign money from big interests. Traditionally, in the county elections, about half of the contributions have come from the development industry. That's a lot. And I think it's important for candidates to have, and I grab my colleagues' degree, to have an alternative to that, to be able to forego those special interest contributions, though you have to attract candidates to participate. And so this bill's been several months in the works to craft it in a way that will result in reducing the influence of big money, in attracting candidates to participate in it, because if you don't do that, it doesn't make any difference, and to help improve public confidence in government, because trust is the coin of the realm in government, and we can do something about it now in Montgomery County, and I think we're going to. We have a public hearing on the bill next Tuesday evening at 7:30, and then it goes to committee, I think on March 17, I think. So we're moving in that direction, and I'm really pleased that there's been a lot of support for it.
Councilmember Elrich?
The council had to wait for enabling legislation from the state, and I will say that the council consistently supported getting enabling legislation from the state. But I think Phil's point should not be underestimated. We talk about the national level, about the influence of special interests, and there is no special interest at the national level that contributes around half the funds to a person's campaign. Not all of us take that money. I know that Phil doesn't. I don't. We've managed to survive politically and get elected without doing that. I don't believe it's necessary. I don't think you need a law to do that, but I think that in the next election, hopefully things will be different, and all the candidates will voluntarily take part in it, and it'll be a different kind of election.
Councilmember Branson?
Thank you. As the only person here who has never had to raise a dime, and I think that's important. I was appointed to this seat, and I have a certain freedom that the other people here don't have. I don't have to raise a dime, and I can't run again. So this is a really great place for me to be. But I say that so that, because I really do, I have a great deal of sympathy for my colleagues. The average council race costs well over $100,000. You know, the big money in politics is real. It has an effect. And to be honest with you, if I ever had to raise a dime, I would not have been sitting here. So, you know, I am here because of my joy to serve, because of my belief in public service, and I think that's why anybody should be doing this. This is really hard work. And those of us who do it shouldn't have to feel constrained, you know. But I want you all to know that from what I've seen the last whole month of my tenure, there is every effort made to really hear everyone out so that money doesn't become the factor. I've never heard one person on this stage talk to me about donations or anything. I mean, there is an incredible, an incredible effort to balance the viewpoints and to hear everyone fairly. I just want you all to know that. Thank you.
Well said.
Hi, I'm Donna Pfeiffer. I've lived in Clarksburg for 22 years, and I'm here to talk about schools. First of all, I want to let you, hope to see you all the third Tuesday of every month at Clarksburg High School PTA meetings. We'd love to have you. It'd be fantastic to have a crowd like this. But as I wanted to mention to you guys, two things. One, sidewalks from Stringtown to Milestone. Craig, I know that you've been working on that. I just wanted to touch base and see where we are with that. Obviously, those sidewalks to lead to here, to Rocky Hill, and to Clarksburg High School, they're much needed. All the PTA presidents seven years ago have started the process and wrote the letter to the people we were supposed to write it to, and want to know where we are with that. And then second question is, our new development that's ready to burst at the seams is Cabin Branch. And my understanding is the school site, the elementary school site there, isn't going to be turned over into MCPS until after the 428th home or something like that. And so where are those 427 families going to go to elementary school? Clarksburg Elementary is where they're slated. That's a teeny little school. That was the only elementary school that was here when I moved here 22 years ago, besides Cedar Grove. And, you know, it's going to, why is that? Why is it not being turned over sooner?
So let me start off with your first question, because I think there's a bit of good news, and then I'll dovetail into the second part, which might not be so good. The sidewalks are now a part of our CIP, and so that is programmed. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but that is now a part of our budget. So that's great news, that we will see those sidewalks coming, which is extremely important and a huge safety hazard. Right? So that's great. When it comes to MCPS and when it comes to our development plan and how we ask developers to turn over schools, I think it's an antiquated system, and I think that it's broken, just my own personal opinion, along with a number of other MCPS rules that we have that are broken as well. As the chair of the Education Committee for the council, I've had conversations about moratorium. I've had conversations about boundary lines. We need to start having real conversations about what the antiquated way in which we used to do things versus how we do them now, because our areas aren't growing the same. They don't look the same. We've got to be more responsive. So I couldn't agree with you more, and you're going to see more pressure from us as a council in working in conjunction with. I'm not saying that our school system's evil or that they're purposely doing this. That's not the case. It's just sometimes it takes a little push to get people off of the way they've always done things and make sure they're thinking about this from a different perspective. I know that my colleague on the Education Committee, Councilmember Andrews, has been working on this for a long time and had the same kinds of conversations. And I know that Councilmember Branson, who's now joined us in the place of Councilmember Irvin, who was a stalwart in really looking at these kinds of things, we all agree that it's something that we need to take a look at and really change the way we're doing this.
My name is Barry Fantal. I have lived in Montgomery County for over 20 years and was one of the first residents in Clarksburg Town Center. I serve as president of the Clarksburg Civic Association, but tonight I'm speaking to you as a resident. First, I would like to thank the members of the council for coming out tonight to speak with the residents of Clarksburg. I would also like to especially thank Councilmember Florine for reading into the record during the TNE and Fed Joint Committee session, all the things that have been promised to Clarksburg but have not yet been delivered. The list is so long, she was not able to read it in one breath. Once again, Clarksburg is divided, but it did not have to be this way. The county should have never opened the Clarksburg Master Plan. There are protections already in place for Ten Mile Creek. The council has the option of not allowing water and sewer category changes for Stage Four development. These changes should not be allowed until the effects of Stage Three can be studied. Quite frankly, Stage Four should not even have been a consideration until earlier stages were complete, and there should be no new Stage Four density until infrastructure, such as Observation, M-83, and CCT are completed and connected to Clarksburg. These roads, I do believe, were not part of the development district that was abolished. I urge the council to not amend the Clarksburg Master Plan. I realize that there's been a lot of time and money spent on this amendment, but that does not justify doing the wrong thing. We now have a baseline on water quality that can be used for comparison in the future, and there are existing methods in the master plan to protect Ten Mile Creek. Not changing the master plan is a win-win for everyone. The creek stays protected, and there's still potential for appropriate development to take place in the future, assuming it does not harm the creek, and this will be better evaluated after Stage Three is complete. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Elrich?
I really appreciate those comments. This whole issue of going back to opening up, this discussion about Stage Four, wouldn't have come up had not there been a major push to have the council make a finding that it was ready to go forward with Stage Four. And the alternative to going forward with Stage Four was to do the study that was called for, and I agree, it would have been nice to have been able to wait, but not waiting, I believe we needed to go forward. And we've done two studies, and both studies, the one that was originally done on my first term on the council, when Mike Knapp was still here, the majority of that committee recommended that there be a zoning change, that that needed to be examined, and that's pretty similar to what's come out the second time, and we've talked to the people involved in the science of this. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a published paper that just came out in February examining the county's stormwater management on a stream just to the south of here. It's in Watershed 104, and this is the latest techniques, and the evaluation said basically that mitigation is not effective. I'm not sure that we would have gotten that later. There's already evidence, despite what was required in the first plan, that Ten Mile Creek has degraded. I don't see how we, I don't think it's an inappropriate conclusion to have reached the decision that we need to put greater impervious limits on Ten Mile Creek, because I don't believe you can build under, you know, I think it was west of 270, the plan called for 15% imperviousness, and east of 270, it didn't mention it at all. I don't think you could have gone forward under that plan, and I think that we spent a lot of time looking at the science, a lot of time looking at the science on this, and we may not have had all, we may not get all the zoning right, and I've heard some actually interesting comments from people before this meeting started, but I think the principle of trying to get a better number and protecting the creek, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Councilmember Berliner?
Good evening to you. I thought I should introduce myself. I'm Roger Berliner, and I chair our Environment Committee. And it's a responsibility that I have taken very, very seriously in conjunction with what we are dealing with tonight and what has been consuming you and consuming my colleagues. It is something that we have struggled with for months, bringing in experts from all across the country to make sure that we really did understand exactly what is at play here. And I have to tell you, as one who listened to all the evidence, that I believe that the conclusion that our Joint Committee has recommended with respect to this, that limits development where it most needs to be limited, is absolutely what is called for and does not do harm to Clarksburg's future. My colleagues previously indicated that there was a retail study done for our county, paid for by our county, that said you cannot do what people wanted to do on Miles Coppola without harming Town Center if, in fact, the premium outlet mall goes forward at Cabin Branch, which we voted to do. The retail study said you will have surplus retail if you do that, that will harm the prospects of Town Center to flourish. The analysis we were given was over 90% of the homes that are projected for Clarksburg are already allowed to be built in Stages One, Two, and Three, more than sufficient to support a vibrant Town Center. And the evidence was overwhelming, that if you allow the magnitude of development that is contemplated, you will irreparably harm Ten Mile Creek. Now, I live down-county. I'm a District Council member, and I typically like to defer to my other District Council members on issues that are so important to a district. Mr. Shapiro raised the question as to why do others get to play in this conversation, if you will? Because it is a larger conversation. Ten Mile Creek has significance beyond. It is our last best stream in the county. It is, U.S. EPA called it a treasure. We have a responsibility to look at it seriously. And I will say to you that the plan that we have is a balanced plan that accurately and appropriately protects Ten Mile Creek and allows the kind of development that should take place, but not more. So I want you to know that my colleagues really have worked very hard on this. We've heard a passionate outcry on both sides, but we did not take our responsibility lightly, and I think we feel very confident that this was the right thing to do, and we didn't ask for it to be done. Right? It was, a trigger was triggered that forced us to now look at this issue. And in 1994, they at least had the wisdom in that plan to say, when you get to this stage, do look at what happened to Ten Mile Creek. Do look at whether or not you have a capacity to protect Ten Mile Creek, and if you don't, you do need to look at whether or not you need to look at other zoning options. We have done exactly what was contemplated in the '94 plan at this juncture and reached what I believe to be an appropriate conclusion. Thank you.
So here on the council, one of the things that oftentimes happens is that sometimes we don't agree. And while we don't agree, it's okay. And this is one of those instances where I actually disagree with the chair of the TNE Committee, and it's fine. The reality is, is that I The reality is, is that I believe that we made a very big mistake in allowing Cabin Branch to move forward and shifting the center, the Economic Development and Retail Center, from Town Center to Cabin Branch. And I'll tell you why I think that, because this is extremely important. I live in Germantown, and I've seen Town Center. And if anybody who knows Germantown and knows Germantown Town Center knows the retailers that are in that development that have continued to struggle, struggled to make it, I know many of those small business owners, and I talk to them quite frequently. We continue to lose retailers left and right. And then Wegmans came. And while it's very exciting that Wegmans came in Seneca Meadows, what we are seeing is, everybody is now headed to Seneca Meadows and not as many people headed towards the Town Center of Germantown. I see the same possibility happening here with Clarksburg Town Center. That is the reason why I want to make sure that the surrounding areas are supportive of Clarksburg Town Center. My Clarksburg residents made it very clear to me, and a lot of other folks that were concerned about this always said they wanted to protect Clarksburg Town Center, that they understood that the res, that the residents knew this was a priority. You can't have it both ways. You can't say that you're not going to develop around Clarksburg Town Center and make sure that that's the center and the hub of Clarksburg, but then also say that it's gonna be okay and it's gonna be successful. It doesn't work that way. And so this is a time where we just disagree as to where the fundamental needs are. I understand, we have to protect Ten Mile Creek, and I agree. I was one of the ones, much to the dismay of many people in this audience, who went along with the Clarksburg Master Plan. We had asked the planning board to weigh, making sure that we protected Ten Mile Creek and also allow for us to try and live out the spirit and vision of the Clarksburg 1994 Master Plan. I think that the Planning Board staff draft did just that, and that's why I'm still supporting us trying to go in that direction, and we'll be continuing to fight for that. Councilmember Levendall?
Well, one, one great thing for everyone in this room is that every councilmember has learned a great deal about Clarksburg, and that we're doing a lot of thinking about what Clarksburg ought to look like, and how do you balance these imperatives of having a healthy economy and a high quality of life and a protected and safe and clean environment? And we're struggling through it. It's been a great deal of work. I've been on the council now, this is my 12th year, and I don't recall the amount of intensity and just frankly, hard work, or the amount, as, and I appreciated the comments of Chairman Berliner, the, the amount of scientific information that's been provided to us. The reality is, is that 1994 was 20 years ago, and we're supposed to reevaluate community plans on a 20 to 30-year timeframe. In 1994, there was an expectation that there would be a hospital in Clarksburg. The state decided that that wasn't the appropriate location for a hospital. In 1994, there was an expectation that there would be a high-tech office market. Well, that hasn't happened. The office market is very, very weak countywide, and it's weak in Clarksburg. And so some of the expectations of what might have occurred in 1994, not surprisingly, have been modified over 20 years. And it makes sense, on that kind of timeframe, after a couple of decades, to understand what are the economic realities today. Cabin Branch is well-located to Route 270. We did not, despite what the press has reported, approve an outlet mall at Cabin Branch. If the investment climate is such, and if the market dictates, there may very well be an outlet mall at Cabin Branch. The county isn't building it, and the county hasn't even approved it. The county council went along with the recommendation of the Hearing Examiner based on all the evidence through a fair and objective process, acting in our capacity, really, as a quasi-judicial body. And what was before us was a yes or no vote to approve the Hearing Examiner's reports based on all the evidence, and we approved it. And it is likely that there will be an outlet mall, and that that will be a regional draw, and that people will come from some distance to Cabin Branch. Would something of that scale and scope have dwarfed the people-serving nature of Town Center? Would something of that scale and scope been harmful to the watershed, given the elevation and the seeps and the springs and all of the things that we've learned in the course of this discussion? I think, I entered into this without a lot of predispositions. I did not, I was not an early adopter of the very, very restrictive zoning that I think ultimately we're going to approve. But I listened very carefully to the evidence, which is what we were asked to do by our lawyers, because the reality is, is that some of the property owners are gonna be, and already are, very disappointed, and this may end up in court. And we were warned that we should not make prejudicial comments early in the process, that we should be open to the evidence, and that we ought carefully to consider the information that was presented. And I've done that over the last few months, and I think that the overwhelming majority of this council has moved towards a broad consensus that will allow commercial activity in Town Center, that will, I hope, hold the prospect of addressing the failed septic system, the problem in Historic District, but that will also impose the strictest possible restrictions on damaging the watershed in the area where the watershed is at its highest quality. I'm comfortable with the compromise that we've reached. You know, I know that not, not everyone is 100% satisfied. I, I don't actually remember a major decision that I've made at the county council where 100% of my constituents were fully satisfied, but I think we've worked through this in a thoughtful and a serious way.
We are running out of time. I've got a question here from this nice resident who's waited so patiently.
My name is Frances Foreman, and I live on Stringtown Road. I first want to thank you all for having a moment of silent prayer for my father. My question to Craig Rice and the council is, when are y'all gonna fix Stringtown Road? I know y'all put some signs up there, but I want y'all to know, those signs are probably all down because of accidents on Stringtown Road. I'd like to see it four-lane from Stringtown Road at 355 all the way to Snowden Parkway, and that also alone in between. So if you could tell me when you think you're gonna do that, I'd be happy.
Yes, ma'am. Let me just tell you, before I turn it over to Councilmember Florine, let me just say that we are working on a, on a deal to make sure that we can move up Stringtown Road. You know that parts of Stringtown Road are responsibilities of the developer, and because of that, we understand that there's a public safety issue, and we want to make sure that we can address Stringtown Road from a public safety issue and not have to wait until the development takes place and until the developer gets around to building it. And so it is a priority, you know, Ms. Foreman, you and I have talked about this before. I promise you, I promise you that we are also working with the county executive and the county executive staff. It is a number-one priority of theirs, and we are trying to make the deal to make sure that we can move that forward, so. Well, folks, I'm, I'm sorry, we're actually gonna close out.
Do we have another answer to that particular question, because we have time for one more answer on that question?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, thank you, Ms. Foreman. I think you raised that 12 years ago. I think you raised that eight years ago. Well, we've been hearing about this for a long time, and it's one of the challenges of expecting the private sector to come along at the same time as everything else. That was the big problem with Clarksburg's development. Things didn't quite happen with the timing organized that we would have liked to have seen. I actually put together several infrastructure planning sessions years ago to get that on track, and we're still working on it, but we'll get it done.
Okay. Well, that is all we have time for, for our town meeting tonight. I'm going to turn it back over to Craig Rice for some closing remarks and a quick goodbye.
Listen, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out, and I know that many of you had more questions. We will remain here afterwards. I hope my colleagues will as well, to be able to address some of the concerns. But let me tell you, from the turnout, we understand, we've heard from Clarksburg, that these issues are important. My colleagues have seen the concerns that you have and really appreciate you coming out to voice your issues. Thank you.